Mayor?
Yes, sir.
How you doing?
I thought you weren't gonna be here.
I thought you weren't gonna be here.
Well...
I'm kidding.
No, they told me you weren't.
That was... Look, I want my attendance sheet. I'm working on it 100 percent.
Okay, okay. That's all good.
What, it's the goal.
It's always good to have high scores.
I want that award.
Okay. Would you please call the robe?
They're on. They were on.
Brooks, Brooks, you might get it today.
Technical difficulties. We need to shortly start. I promised I didn't sort it out on purpose. Now, if it's playoff games, yeah, whatever.
We just had to rush through.
Yeah, that was a good game.
Yeah, that is. Speaking to someone.
Hello?
Hello?
We said we talked really nicely. Okay. He's my marine torpedo, that's what my dad used to do. Dad, you got your mom down this road. He was five foot three.
Stan? How you doing?
Great.
Huh? Super great. I just, I appreciate you working. We walk up and you're out. You're out handling business. We walk in and you are still handling business. No.
Just working.
Yeah. Yeah? But you're the cleaner, man. You're Mr. Fixer.
Okay, it's working.
Would you call the robe, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here. Would you please, uh, please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number two is the consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held April 2nd, 2018. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2018 in the amount of $4,120,454.56.
No, to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. It's a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number three is receive the annual Pioneer Library System Report from Executive Director Lisa Wells.
The library's a great place, you should watch that.
Fine, thanks.
Mayor, council, and city staff, I want to thank you for the opportunity to visit you to talk about the library. I also want to briefly acknowledge your branch manager, Chris Manin. Aiden Street, the associate director for, um, a lot of things. We just keep giving her more and more jobs. And then I also want to make sure that you know that Brent Willbarger is your representative to the Pioneer Library System Board of Trustees. So if there's something going on that you like, tell Brent. If there's something going on that you don't like, tell Brent. He has all the power. So just know that he is your representative and he's there to be your voice on our board. And he has another year to serve. So we'll be back about this time next year asking you to appoint someone new. In your packet on the left-hand side, you'll have our latest, uh, annual report. We're really proud of it. We hope that there's something in there that you find that you like as well. All of those statistics are for the system as a whole. So none of those are strictly about Moore. But I'm going to talk with you about some things that really are just about Moore. And most of those things you will find on the right side of your packet. The first thing that I, I want to do before I move into the exciting things, which is the stories, to tell you a little bit about the lives we're changing in your community, I want to highlight just some numbers. I want to make sure that you know that by statute, we're partners in library service in our area. Pioneer Library System was formed in 1958. And we provide library service in Cleveland, McLean, and Potawatomi County. We currently have 11 libraries in 10 cities. And we will open our 12th library, um, early summer in East Norman. So we invite you to be a part of that grand opening. It's a lovely facility, one that will be too small the day it opens. But it is, uh, we're hoping it's going to be an award-winning facility. As a part of that partnership, the City of Moore provides the facility. You act as the owner. You provide custodial, maintenance, and that's why Stan and I are such good friends. I spent six years here as your branch manager from 2006, from 2004 to 2010. And I can honestly say it was some of the most rewarding times in my professional career. Had a fond memories here, met many, many friends, and friends that will be friends for a lifetime. So, uh, this library is pretty near and dear to my heart. And people that, um, show up there are pretty special because I look over all that pretty closely and make sure that we are providing outstanding, world-class service all across our system. But there's a couple of jewels in the crown that get a little bit of extra eyeball from the executive director. As the owner, you all are responsible for providing the facility. And as I said, the custodial, the maintenance, and the furniture. And then Pioneer Hampton is the operator. And we like to say we do everything that makes it a library. We provide staff, physical and digital materials, public computers, programming. We do that both inside the library and in the community. And as a part of that commitment, our investment for fiscal year 17, 18, as you can see, was just over $2 million. So that's something that we're bringing into your community to provide library services here. In addition to that $2 million, that's direct expenses to the Moore Library. We have some system expenses, about another 3/4 of a million dollars in electronic resources. And that's not counting all of the rest of the collection that your citizens have access to across our system. We're really pleased with the partnership. We think that it's one that benefits all of our communities and, most importantly, all of our citizens. To highlight just a few of the numbers and the hard facts at the bottom, things that you might not think of every day. The library had just over 26,000 Wi-Fi uses, um, in that fiscal year. So Wi-Fi is a pretty big business, even though, uh, when we pull the numbers and we look at who's using the Wi-Fi, it's a lot of the same people who are using the public computers. And when I said, "That doesn't make a lot of sense to me," they said, "Well..." You know, they get two log-ons on the public computer and then they use the Wi-Fi using their, basically, their handheld devices. So connectivity is still a huge problem all across our service area and one that is not specific just to Moore. Your physical collection, actual books, you know, like, the library's not just about books anymore, but we do still have some of those. About 125,000 items housed right here at Moore. You are the second-largest location in the, in the system. So as a result of that, you have the second-largest physical, um, materials budget. Additionally, we have 65 public computers. That's for the public to use. Again, connectivity, I think a lot of people think that everybody has connectivity now, but we, there really is still a digital divide. Digital inclusion is something that is very important to us and something that we invest heavily in. The things that happen at the library continue to be more and more about technology. And we try very hard to find that balance between traditional library, what we like to call your grandmother's library, and the new library, which is what we like to call Pioneer Library System. So we work hard to find that balance. They're both very, very important. Some of the success stories that we collect throughout the year that I want to share with you all really speaks to about two or three different areas. One is that we're very happy to be partnering in our community. We believe that it helps serve the greater good. We'd like to be a part of the solution. And, um, we, we have a longstanding history with exceptional storytimes. Storytime is a big business at the Moore Library, baby storytime, toddler storytime, expressing all of those early literacy skills to, to the, the young ones here in the community. And while we've been doing that for years at the library, this year they partnered with the Boxcar and started to roll out a new service. So twice a month, they're doing storytimes at the Boxcar. We're seeing a different group of people, a group of people that we weren't seeing inside the Moore Library. And getting outside of our library becomes more and more of what we're about. We really want to meet people where they're at. We want to provide that resource wherever they may be in the community. And in order to do that, we have to get outside and in the community. Additionally, as the community changes, we learn, adapt, and grow. And we're very excited that this summer, we're going to be partnering with the Moore Public Schools. They have a new service that they're going to be offering, which is a traveling feeding bus. And they're going to be focusing on feeding children without consistent meals throughout the summer. Library staff's actually going to travel on the bus, will provide storytimes, will provide library resources and educational resources to both the children and their parents. And we feel, we'll also have some physical collection that they can check out on the bus. We're very excited that it's brand-new and that Moore Public Schools, we were able to partner with them. The summer slide is something that we talk about a lot in the library world. And it's that amount of time that children lose over the summer when they're not actually engaged with reading. And it's, it's very much, um, reviewed and tested that the summer slide is real. They're about six weeks behind when they enter school. So the first six weeks of school, teachers are really bringing them back up to speed as to where they were in May. And anything that we can do to positively affect that, we believe is in all of our best interest and something that is a core value of ours. So we're excited to be taking on this effort and partnering with Moore Public Schools. A number of our exciting programs that are happening in the library, we're at capacity. And so with our Girls Who Code program, you may know about Girls Who Code, but it's an organization that has about 90,000 girls across 50 states. And the campaign really is to attract gender parity in computer science jobs by 2027. As you can imagine, it's a huge asset to our workforce here in Moore, as well as across the state of Oklahoma. Our program is in Moore's full. We have a waiting list of about 30 girls. And if we could double the size of the computer training center, I'm guessing we would have a waiting list of about 30 girls because it seems, you know, the more we have to offer, the more that we have coming, taking advantage of that. The Girls Who Code program includes a lot of guest speakers from across the community, as well as some class trips. So they were able to take a field trip to Dell Computers, see what that looks like, really get a feel for working in that type of environment. And this fall, they're going to visit Tri-Fecta and learn about what Tri-Fecta does and how can, how they can also be in, related to computers, but doing something completely different. Also, they have a group project. And this year, the girls decided, obviously, they decide themselves what the group project is. And with, of course, the help of some instructors, they fulfill that mission. This year, that they are focusing on, um, providing resources to girls who are suffering from mental distress and bullying. They actually presented and created an Animoto, uh, well, they created a website and then they're going to have an animation video that really strives to tell the story to young women about resources available to those who are suffering from mental distress and how to seek help. That project's going to go live in a couple of weeks. So we'll be sure that Chris has a chance to share that with you all. We want you to see what's happening here in your community. And then, on the other end of the spectrum, we have an adult painting program that's called, um, Paint the Sky. It was an acrylic painting class. Again, we were at capacity. And we added another session and then had about another 30 people waiting. And we brought in a local artist who taught the class attendees how to actually do a painting. Everybody walked away with their own painting from the library. So we feel that we are really, um, bridging the gap between the services that we're providing for all age groups. And as we continue, Pioneer continues to work toward our mission, which is inspiring innovation, engagement, and learning in our communities, we're continually planning for the future. I know planning is a big part of your envisioned Moore 2040 plan. And I believe it's important to remember the library as your resource. In fact, we want to provide and continue to provide world-class services to your citizens. We want to be a part of your vision. We want to help you get to where you want to be by 2040. And in closing, the Moore Library was just honored with a distinction of outstanding achievement in innovative programs and health literacy. They were recognized as an innovator in practical and effective solutions to addressing health literacy by the Institute of Healthcare Advancement. Staff will travel to California early in May to receive the award. To my knowledge, it's the only one given out in our system, perhaps in the state of Oklahoma. As we continue to innovate together, I encourage you to make the library your first resource. We're there for you as well. We're in the resource business. In fact, we're in the business of engagement and learning as well. And if you have an, at, opportunity for partnership, please reach out to Chris and let us be a part of that. Together, I think we can accomplish our wildest dreams. Thank you for your continued commitment and investment in your community, and specifically, the library. I hope the future holds an opportunity for us to update our library to meet the standards of a 21st-century library and the amazing vision that you've crafted for the City of Moore. We love our partnership and plan to fully engage in providing a high standard of service to this community now and in the foreseeable future. Thank you for your time this evening. I look forward to answering any questions you have. My business card is in the front of the packet. And I know that Chris and Aiden would also be available. But like I said, remember, Brent is your representative to the board. He has all the power. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? You said, if you add double capacity on the computer stuff for the girls, uh, the girls who code, that it would fill up? What would it take to double that?
Presently, in the facility we're in, we really couldn't do that without eliminating some collection or some of the other public, some of those 65 public computers that we have.
Okay. So, but if you had more space and you could double it, could you utilize it?
Could we?
Could you use it?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item four is consider approval of a contract amendment with ADG Incorporated for Howard Avenue Streetscape Design in the amount of $49,500.
Mayor and council. Council approved an engineering contract with ADG for the Howard Avenue Streetscape Project and the Old Town Drainage Project in 2017. That project was split into two phases. Phase one was, um, Howard Avenue, south of Main Street, from South, uh, from Main Street to South Fourth Street. That was a large, um, phase because it did include all of the drainage work, studying the drainage, uh, system throughout Old Town and devising ways to get the water to drain, which was not an easy task. That phase, uh, cost $108,000. We are now approaching phase two, uh, which will be from the north of Main Street, from Main Street to North Second Street. It does include the, uh, Howard Avenue just by the, the school. Uh, and, uh, we wanted to get an approval, uh, from council to include the north side of Main Street in the engineering contract. The remaining costs that would be incurred would be $49,500. And again, uh, we, we would like to start that project as soon as school is out so we can get that portion of Howard Avenue constructed during the summer months. And if you have any questions beyond that, I'm happy to answer them.
What do we get for $49,000?
We would get the, um, north side of Howard engineering plans. That does include some drainage work, but the majority of the drainage work has already been completed down on South Howard. But we will be adding, um, storm sewer, uh, to the north phase and on-street parking, and a reconstructed roadway with bike lanes and sidewalks.
So the north phase just wasn't ever part of the contract to begin with, is that? Or is it, or it's an increase in cost?
It's an increase in cost, right. Because the, the phase one did go over budget because of the, uh, large issues that we had with the drainage.
Mayor and council, this, uh, this project was, was always scheduled to be in two phases. Phase one was going to be south of Main Street, and then phase two would be north of Main Street. Budgeted in two separate fiscal years. And, uh, the current phase we're in now, south of Main Street, we ran into some unforeseen issues with drainage and utility relocates and some other things that, uh, that added to the cost. And so what we're trying to do now is, is get the, the north side of this project, get the engineering approved so we can, we can get, uh, going on that. And like Elizabeth said, uh, timing is more of an issue with the north side because of the school.
So is it, is it the engineering that they're going to do and not the physical work? Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. The Silver Star crews are doing the work.
I, I still don't understand. What, you come in that you actually need an extra, uh, $45,000 just to engineer it? After you already paid them a million something?
Oh, no, we did not pay them a million dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry? It says 1.75 million dollar cost.
That's the total cost of the construction.
Okay, that's what I was asking, if that included the construction or if that was just engineering? Okay, I understand now, sorry.
Make a motion to approve?
All right.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote? There's no other discussion.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider approval of the amended and restated exclusive negotiation agreement with the Belmont Development Company, LLC, and RRC Development, Moore, LLC, for the redevelopment of the Southwest 17th Street and Janeway site.
Mayor and council, Jeff Saban from Belmont is here to present this item.
I'm with the Center for Economic Development, Moore. I'm the councilor for the, the city on, uh, actually getting this project underway and constructed. If the council recalls, on your, at your February 20th meeting, uh, you had adopted an ENA with Belmont. Corey Farmer with Belmont is here, if you have any questions for him later. But basically, um, an exclusive negotiating, uh, negotiation agreement is the first part of a two-part, uh, development agreement structure. The ENA is where the developer actually submits their designs and financing structure for the city to review and approve. And once those designs and financing schemes are approved, then they actually negotiate the, uh, actual disposition and development agreement, which turns those, uh, approved designs and financing, financing, uh, schemes into an obligation of the developer to build, um, providing for timing of disposition, construction, completion, and any other ongoing responsibilities under the city's CDG-DR program. The first deadline under the current ENA was for the developer to submit design documents, uh, by the third week in March. We were contacted shortly before that deadline passed, that, uh, from Belmont, saying that they needed some extra time. One of their market studies that they had come back with caused them to, uh, have to reevaluate some of their assumptions on their, uh, unit counts and mixes. And instead of trying to scramble last minute to come up with something that didn't work very well, they wanted to make sure that that market study was reviewed and that they would actually, uh, have a plan of something that can actually be constructed. So, under the previous, uh, current ENA, uh, the negotiation period, which would be the deadline, uh, after which point the site would be under contract for development and disposition, would have ended at the end of May. And that was the time that the city would have expected to be under contract for the site. The amended ENA amends that date to June 30th. So it essentially pushes that date out, uh, an extra 30 days. One of the things that Belmont also requested was instead of submitting the design documents and their financing plans and the stair-step structure, where they submit their designs first and their financing a little bit later, it was easier for them to submit everything all at once to make sure that everything meshes and they don't have any amendments to those plans, uh, in the process. So they've proposed, uh, pushing those deadlines back from, uh, the end of March and the end of April, respectively, submitting everything by May 11th. The city's review for these, uh, will be done, uh, at the end of May. The city, uh, under the terms of the amended and restated ENA, can extend both the negotiation period up to 60 days if it's needed for extra review or negotiations or for the individual developer submissions for their designs and financing. You can, uh, push it back, uh, up to two, uh, periods of 15 days for up to a month, if needed. Assuming that the amended and restated ENA is approved tonight, the anticipated timeline for this project, uh, would have, uh, a DDA signed, uh, at, by the end of June, uh, of this year. And then the due diligence and the actual property convenance would be completed by the end of August so that construction could start, uh, in September. And then the construction period would be between 20 and 22 months, uh, we estimate, with lease up beginning in March 2020, construction being completed, uh, in June 2020, and with stabilized occupancy and full leasing, uh, coming up sometime in spring or late spring, uh, in 2021. If the council has any questions, I'll have to answer the best I can.
So basically, you guys are in default right now because you missed the deadline. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we can pull this project and give it to someone else? Is that correct? Technically, yes. There's not going to be any more deadlines, correct? This is the final deadline? If we approve this? Yes, sir. Okay. Because this is ridiculous. Every time we do a contract, and not necessarily with you guys, but whoever we do it with, it always comes back, they want more money, they want more time. They never fill the contract. So I think everybody up here, I'm just speaking for the rest of them, I don't know. But I think we've given everybody too much at-ease time with all these different contracts. It's time to actually, you know, start either you produce or we get somebody else. Excuse me, my throat's gone out. So that's just the way I feel about it.
I understand, sir. And I'll definitely make sure that that's conveyed, uh, to Belmont.
Well, I think you heard me.
Yes, sir.
So, so we're good on that?
I believe so, sir.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? Either way.
Well, I was just kind of, um, works in writing. Have you all reviewed this? And were there any questions or?
I don't have any questions. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number six is receive information concerning the Parks and Cemetery Maintenance Personnel Budget for FY '18.
Mayor and council, uh, during the fiscal year '16 budget process, the city manager requested and council approved the addition of three maintenance employees for the Parks and Cemetery Maintenance Department. We have discovered, however, that in fiscal year '17 and '18, that these additional positions were not budgeted. And that caused in fiscal year '17 for the expenditures to exceed the budget. And, um, with the fifth fiscal year '18 budget, we're kind of headed in that and with the fifth fiscal year eighteen budget, we're kind of headed in that same direction. So we wanted to make you aware of what had happened, and closer to the end of the fiscal year, we will be bringing back to council a budget amendment to correct this omission that we had in the fiscal year eighteen budget. We also have made sure that we have fixed that in the fiscal year nineteenth budget, so it won't happen again. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
So we're correcting a line item on positions we already approved?
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Thank you, thank you both. How much is the line item on there that we're adding to?
It'll be around sixty thousand, or sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Can I ask who seconded the motion?
I did.
Would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
And Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the more public works authority meeting. Item number seven is the consent document. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular more public works authority meeting held April second, two thousand eighteen. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen in the amount of six hundred eleven thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars forty-two cents.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. It is a consent document. Would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the more public works authority meeting and convene the more risk management meeting. Item A is the consent document. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular more risk management meeting held April second, two thousand eighteen. Item B is approve payment of a coworker, excuse me, of a worker's compensation settlement in the, excuse me, in the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars for CBR claim number two zero five zero 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 five eight zero to Stephen Landris, unauthorized placement on the add-on tax rolls. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen in the amount of two hundred forty-one thousand forty-seven dollars six cents.
Make a motion to approve?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
And Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the more risk management meeting and convene the more economic development authority meeting. Adam, excuse me.
Item nine, roll call, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Item ten, the consent document. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular more economic development authority meeting held March nineteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Make a motion to approve?
Sir.
Vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
And Adam Webb?
Yes. At this time, we'll recess the more economic development authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. Let the record show that all the members that were present before are still present. Item eleven is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up. Would anyone like to speak? Okay, item B is items from the city council or trustees. All right, item C, item from the city manager or trust manager?
Nothing at this time.
All right. Item number twelve, executive session. Section three oh seven, Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discussing the deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending claim by Kevin Bailey against the city of Moore and authorize legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash four. Item B, discussing if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending litigation style Chris George, Janet George versus the city of Moore, case number CJ two zero one six dash eight seven one TB, and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take actions as necessary and appropriate in the interest of defendants as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash four. Item C, discuss considering if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending litigation style Rodmore Golf Club LC versus the city of Moore, case number CJ two zero one six dash seven four nine, and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take actions as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the defendants as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash four. Item D, discuss considering if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending litigation style Canyon Properties and Oklahoma Limited Liability Company versus Metro Brokers of Oklahoma Incorporated and Oklahoma Corporation, Real Estate Specialist Inc. and Oklahoma Corporation, Grant Wortman, David Dillard, Gabe Sauvigny, Elizabeth Jones, Steve Eady, and Does One X dash case number CJ two zero one eight dash four oh six TB, and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take actions as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the defendants as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash four. Do we have a motion to convene to executive session?
So moved.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, thank you for coming. We adjourn to executive session.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
I'll read these off again. Item A is discussed and if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending claim by Kevin Bailey against the City of Moore. Unauthorized legal counsel and staff to take actions as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city is authorized by 25 Oklahoma statutes, 307B. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion we proceed as directed.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote? Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Item B is discussed and if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending litigation style Chris George and Janet George versus the City of Moore. Case number CJ-2016-871-TB. An authorization for legal counsel and staff to take actions as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the defendants is authorized by 25 Oklahoma statutes, 307B-4.
Make a motion we proceed as directed.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you both. Let's call for the vote, please. Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis. Yes, item carries. Item C is discussed considering if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending litigation style Broadmoor Golf Club LC versus the City of Moore. Case number CJ-2016-749. An authorization for legal counsel and staff to take actions as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the defendants is authorized by 25 Oklahoma statutes, 307B-4. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to proceed as directed.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please? Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis. Yes, item carries. Item number D. Discussed considering if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending litigation style Canyon Properties and Oklahoma Limited Liability Company versus Metro Brokers of Oklahoma Incorporated and Oklahoma Corporation. Real Estate Specialist Inc. and Oklahoma Corporation. Grant Wortman, David Dillard, Gabe Sinbobi, I think I'm not saying that right.
Savingi.
Savingi, okay. Thank you. Elizabeth Jones, Steve Eadie, and those one X. Case number CJ-2018-406-TB. An authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the defendants is authorized by 25 Oklahoma statutes, 307B-4.
No action.
Barrett, this time there's really no action necessary on item D. All right, no action taken. Item E, or excuse me, item 13 is adjournment.
So moved?
Second. Would you call for the vote, please? Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham. Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
We're adjourned, thank you for coming.